This conference will now be recorded.
They didn't realize we were doing a swearing in tonight. They didn't realize we were doing a swearing in tonight. Hey, guys. You guys ready? We're gonna go to the effects and then give it up to you guys.
I-
Well, as soon as he gets in here.
I have a question.
Yeah, good point.
To you sometime, maybe sometime right now.
Yes. Okay, ready? Clerk, please start the recording. Today is Wednesday, December 20th, 2023, and I'd like to call today's city council meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, can I please have roll call?
Councilmember Fox?
Present.
Councilmember Casper?
He's running 10 minutes behind.
He's online.
Paul Boyle, sorry.
Casey, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, I am here.
Councilmember Casper?
Present. Did you hear me?
I hear you now, thank you. Councilmember Boyle is coming. Councilmember Leha?
Present.
Councilmember Servini?
Present.
Mayor Strobin?
Present. Thank you, clerk. All right, we will now do in the swearing in for the mayor's short term.
I was not expecting it, but I know it was on the agenda. No shaking us tonight, right?
Hello, hello, can you turn this up?
You were there, Al.
Hello, test, test, test. Hello? Yes, we're good. Okay, so this is a swearing in for his short term, which is the election that was certified on November 28th, and he will get sworn in later for the election that is effective January 1st. Clear as mud, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Formalities, right?
Yes. Raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Thomas Strobin-
I, Thomas Strobin.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States-
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability-
And to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability.
Truly, faithfully, and diligently-
Truly, faithfully, and diligently.
And impartially perform-
And impartially perform.
The duties of the oath of the mayor of the city of La Center-
The duties of-
Of the office-
Of the office.
Of the mayor of the city of La Center.
Of the mayor of the city of La Center.
In and for Clark County, Washington.
In and for Clark County, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties prescribed by law.
Yes, good job.
All right, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Nelda.
Are you being serious? Are you being serious?
I thought we could use any hand there. So is it official or is it not then?
It's official.
All right, all right. Well, here we go. We are gonna move some things around into tonight's agenda, so this way it'll give the public time to speak on some actions that we will be discussing after our executive session. So at this time, Councilmember Boyle, state. Well, I would like the public comment to be done afterwards, so they can have comments and then go to it. Okay, perfect. Sorry about that. So next up, if there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thank you, council.
And for the record, councilmember Boyle has arrived.
At this time, at 6:35, I would like to call an executive session. This is to discuss potential litigation. So at 6:36, we will go into council chambers, and we will return in 15 minutes. Okay? And motion will be taken when we come out. Yes, thank you.
That's what they're gonna do.
The time is now six fifty-one and we have exited our executive session. Counsel, can I get a motion?
Yes. I make a motion to terminate the police discussion with the Kalatzenian tribe and to move forward with discussion with the Clark County Sheriff's Office for Police Services immediately.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Bronson, should this be a roll call vote?
It doesn't have to be.
No.
You could.
I think I would. Clerk, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Oh, he's recused.
He's himself. Councilmember Casper?
Recused. Sorry, I keep pushing the buttons, but I am recusing myself from this vote.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Leha?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
It's been moved, seconded, and approved. Thank you, counsel. Before we move into the next vote, I do want to say that what we've been trying to do with the Kalatzen Indian Tribe is something that's never been done before, not in the history of the United States. It's been a long road, very tough in negotiations. The city, though, has to have indemnification, I have to really pronounce that slowly, for its own protections, and that's something the tribe and the city just couldn't come to terms with. So at this point, the council has decided that we are to move in a different direction. With that, can I get a motion, counsel, for the, we did the sheriffs already? Was that in that?
We did both.
Ah, I didn't even notice it. I was really thinking about what I was gonna say. And this is one of the reasons that I wanted the council, or the comments from the audience afterwards, because I wanted you all to have a chance to speak, share your opinions with the council as well. Just know that there was a lot of, a lot of sweat and effort put into the negotiations. The attorneys did a great job. Our city attorney was outstanding. Yeah, I'm just sorry that we couldn't complete that process, but I do want to state and emphasize that the relationship between the Kalatzen tribe and us is stronger than ever. This is just a road bump, and you'll see more events that we are involved with together and in different, not issues, but different festivities and such, together, to build that bond and that relationship even stronger. We've come a long ways in a very short amount of time, a very long ways. And, you know, they're, they wanted to make sure as well, and I know I can't speak for them, but they wanted to make sure as well that the city of La Center understands that no matter what, their police force will still come down and help in times of need as well. With that, I'd actually like, if, if the council has any comments to state about this move, you feel free to say something. If not, then we're gonna turn it over to public comment.
Go ahead, counsel. I just want to say that, I mean, obviously, this has been something that we've been pushing for even before I was on council, to provide, you know, public safety to our communities, so it's very near and dear to all of our hearts, and I don't think this has gone without the lack of trying. I know, I want to thank everybody actually on both sides of this, you know, our city staff, mayor, Bronson, think, I mean, everybody put their full effort into it and as well as the members of the Kalatzen Indian Tribe and their staff. There's been a lot of communication, you know, scenarios that have played out, and, you know, unfortunately, we weren't able to come to an agreement, but I'm confident that it's not going to inhibit our relationship going forward, so hopefully you guys can bear with us for a little bit longer and, you know, like, mayor is working on taking that next step to work with sheriff's office and hopefully we can get something going.
Yeah, I just want to second that. I know it's been a long road and you guys have been very patient, as we all have been, and it's something that we've been looking forward to. But just please understand that the choices that we had to make and the scenarios we had to kind of look at, they were all to protect our city and to protect us from, you know, wrongful suits that eventually, you know, we could be responsible for. So, at the end of the day, it's very disheartening, you know, it's, it's just more time and we just appreciate your patience and know that when we get something, it'll, it'll stick and it'll be good for both parties, not just, you know, setting somebody up to be, you know, potentially vulnerable, so just bear with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Good? Okay, thank you. Next up, public comment. Clerk, are there any public comments from the audience?
Yes, Larry Luton?
I lived down in country, oh, Larry Luton, eleven oh nine West C Avenue, I don't know if I'm supposed to say the address. And a couple of years ago, we were, we came to the city about getting our road repaved, we're at Country Hills Estates.
Larry, could you move the mic down towards you a little bit? They can't hear. Yeah, speak up just a little. Yes, good job, thanks.
Anyway, so I came and I had a conversation with the prior mayor and he informed me that because our roads were not standard width, the city's not responsible for taking care of them. So, I just forgot about that. But I've got with me tonight, I brought a picture, and the, we're hooked to one of you guys' roads, and I have a picture here that shows one of the potholes, and it's on the city street. It's on the city street, and there's a line that comes down here, and I understand that we're not going to get anybody to do our road, but this is still part of the public street, and it's in pretty bad shape. And I was just wondering if you guys could at least take a look at it and address it, because I'm worried about that. So that'd be Public Works. The other thing is, we're trying, we may have to reach out somewhere, because a rough estimate is if we were to pay to have that road patched in our re, we're probably looking at close to, I don't know, I've heard anywhere from two hundred to four hundred thousand dollars. And so if the fifty homes are responsible, we're looking at at least five thousand dollars every home's gonna have to give to get that thing resurfaced. Pardon me. So what I'm hoping for is maybe reaching out somewhere and finding out if we could get a grant or something that would help us do that, but the main reason I'm down here was to see if you guys could at least fix up to where our road is, because I think that's still public road. And I'm pretty sure, I'm not sure, but I was told because they weren't gonna take care of our streets, that we weren't gonna have to pay a road tax, so I don't know if that's enforced or not, but anyway, that's why I came down. So, thank you for putting up with me. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Larry, and somebody from the city will be in touch with you. Thank you. Any other comments, clerk?
Yeah, Al Fila?
Al Fila, one five two West Fifteenth Street. Wow. You know, I come up here, oh, every six months and say, I want you guys to do your due diligence, you know, and it looks like this is a case where due diligence has paid off, and you were cutting and, you know, going, you know, to some other level, you know, so kudos for that, you know, no matter, you know, whether you, I agree or disagree with the Kalatzen, but I just wanted to say, I went to the retreat on Saturday, which everybody was invited to go to, and I was the only one, only citizen that showed up, you know, which was kind of, well, it was expected, but, you know, if you want to learn what's going on in this city, you gotta come to these city council meetings, if the opportunity arises for you to go to these retreats, which is available every time, you know. I mean, I had people say, well, didn't they have armed guards come and take you out of there, Al? And, no. You know, they had coffee, they had donuts. Oh, we got coffee, but no donuts tonight. But anyway, it's well worth it.
Liz shared her lunch with you?
Yes, yes. Some council member felt sorry for, you know, poor old man, and gave her, gave part of her lunch to me. Thank you, Liz. You know, anyway, it was well worth it, because, you know, right up here, and you probably read it in the reflector, you know, and they'll be talking about it tonight, you know, the new downtown plan or whatever, you know, which I know to be downtown's always gonna be right over here, because that's where it's been for seventy-two years that I know of. So, anyway. I do want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and God bless America.
Thank you, Al. Clerk?
Gary Watson? Sorry.
Gary Wilson, fourteen one oh two Northeast Fifth Circle, and by the way, by the way, I love that Christmas tree, the size of it, Clark W. Griswold would be proud. Thank you, La Center voters, for voting in formerly appointed Councilwoman Myrna Leah. She was voted in by a landslide over two to one, affirming La Center voters' alignment with the values Myrna espouses. Thanks, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Hopefully, there's no squirrels in that one.
Kimberly Elbon?
Good evening. Kimberly Goheen Elbon, life citizen of Clark County, Washington. I noticed today that on the reader board, the council meeting came on this morning. I understand there might have been an illness or this and that, but frankly, we know every Wednesday when there is a meeting, it should be on twenty-four seven. I think a lot more citizens would be here, let's be more transparent on that, and get the reader board to, to announce the meetings here. I'm gonna take a few, another minute after my three minutes. I think that that's only appropriate for tonight, since we're switching up and changing things, so because I have a few things to say.
Actually, it'll be three minutes, Kimberly.
I, I wouldn't be here right now. My family needs me, except for that the mayor actually passed, if I'm not mistaken, the exec, the consent agenda before the public could speak. I realize that he gave the reason that he wants us to talk about the sheriff's office and the Kalatzen tribe, but I still believe that going off agenda is a big no-no, because I have a few things to say with that consent agenda, so I'm gonna ask the council to retract the vote and maybe, you know, pay attention to a little bit of what I'm gonna say. I'm gonna say also that the sheriff's office is governed by an unelected county manager, Kathleen Otto. Even though the sheriff is elected, the citizens actually have no say over their policing of the citizens. This is deep, and I ask all Clark County sheriffs to serve the people and not an unelected boss of Clark County, Washington. People don't know that yet, but she's the boss. On your minutes of December sixteenth during the retreat, of which I did miss, I had something else prior, and I believe all citizens should join. There should be hundreds of us. So, Councilmember Casper was excused from the regular meeting, but then I noticed that he was there in the executive session. I, I would like to understand why when council members are not here, we need to have their reasons and excuse. I didn't see any on there. You know, we're, we're here in growth. The fact is, is the Clark County joined the Growth Management Act. They did not have to do that, and they should not have. A lot of counties that did not want to be sanctuary or have illegal immigrants do not have the Growth Management Act. I've asked this council to get out of that Growth Management Act, and lo and behold, if they do, there's repercussions in this and that, but I know this, when the people stand up and ask them to stop our heritage of a country setting, making a little town into a big city, I get it, but not the way that this Growth Management Act is. It goes along with the comprehension plan also.
Time's up, please wrap it up, Kimberly.
And they need to stop it. I also want to mention that the word organization is mentioned at least ten times in their retreat paperwork, and an organization is going to be here.
Thank you, Kimberly. That's the rules of the council. Kimberly? Please have a seat, please have a seat, please have a seat, or I'm gonna ask you to leave. Bronson, am I allowed to ask her to leave?
Thank you.
No, no thanks here. You guys needed to let the citizens talk. Somebody gave up two and a half minutes of their time.
Kimberly, any other, or any other comments? You can meet with me after the meeting. I'm, I'm fine to talk with you about it.
I want the public to hear.
Then public can stay.
I want the public to hear what I have to say.
Bronson, is this something that order at that point? Okay, thank you. All right. Clerk, any other public comments? All right. Any public comments from those calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourselves. To speak, state your name and address for the record. I will repeat, any public comments from those calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourselves to speak. State your name and address for the record. Clerk, are there any public comments to be read?
No.
Thank you. Next up is the mayor's report. I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Please take a moment when you're sitting down to eat, think of those less fortunate, keep them in your thoughts and prayers. I'd also like to thank the city staff and the city council for all their hard work this year. It's been go-go-go, and as you can see on the unveiling over there on the board, we've been extremely busy, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. The staff has worked tirelessly to provide services, set up functions for different festivals without hesitation or complaint. So I, I want to thank each and every one of you from the bottom of my heart. I appreciate, appreciate you. Same with the council. Councilmembers, I wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year as well. Thank you for all your effort and everything you've done this year. It does not go unnoticed. And our attorney as well. Thank you, Bronson, for everything you do and even putting up with me. I get a little pushy. I, I would like to also thank all those that did attend the council retreat. Al is correct, we don't see a lot of public attendance to that. In fact, that was the very first person I've seen in five years attend a council retreat that wasn't a counselor. There was a huge unveiling of a new downtown that we've been working on, and we caught the eyes of many different people. It has made the news in the Columbian, the reflector, and last, last night I had a friend actually call me and go, hey, I know that guy, because he heard it on the radio news as well. The public will be involved in this process. Each and every one of you will have a say-so, and a voice that'll be heard. We want to plan the city out for the next hundred years, not ten, twenty, thirty, and we want you to be a part of it. This is your city, and we do respect and see that. I did receive a call from Gluzencamp Perez discussing this plan as well. I spent probably about forty-five minutes on the phone, and it was a, it was a great conversation, and they're offering to help with whatever they can on the infrastructure side of things. So, Brian, I pushed you pretty hard on that, so thank you. It turned out excellent. It really did. With that, I will turn this over to council comments. Councilmember, what's that? Oh, attorney. Oh, I always skip you, Bronson, almost every single meeting. Bronson, do you have anything to say?
No.
No? Merry Christmas.
It's a pleasure serving as your city attorney, most of the time.
Yes, I am very hard to work for, just so you know. Council comments is next. Councilmember Fox?
Hi, good evening. Just happy everyone's here. It's always nice to see faces. Yeah, I just want to say a big thank you to all the people involved in helping our city operate on a daily basis. I know that is no short order, so we just thank you so much as, you know, constituents of this town, that we just appreciate all of the work that goes into our beautiful little city. I'm excited for the new downtown. I'm excited to be on this team, and, you know, being as a collective to make decisions that, you know, shape our children and our children's children and their children and the concept, you know, I've, I've lived here my whole life, as most of you know, and, you know, I'm as much as I want to be against growth, and I want to say stop, go away, and, and, you know, just keep pretending like we're not growing, and that people don't have an interest to move to this part of the county, but they do, and, you know, I'm, I'm getting on board. I like this vision. I like that it's a clean slate, and I like the options that we have to really work with the developers to make a lot of choices, and with the people's input as well, about really how we want that to look, and, you know, face the facts that it's coming, and as much as we don't want the extra traffic and this and so forth, that if at least we can have a say in how that's gonna go, I think that that's, you know, a beautiful opportunity for the city, so I'm happy to be here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Casper?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good. I've been having technical difficulties. I apologize for not being there, but I am not feeling well, and I didn't want to be coughing and hacking on, on everybody in there. I would like to echo the, the mayor's thanks to the city staff. I think they've done an amazing job this year. Yesterday's staff lunch was a really neat event to attend. Thank you, Maria, for putting that together, and Desi as well, and if there's somebody I'm forgetting, I apologize, but it was a neat event. It was good to sit down and, and talk to some of the, the city staff face to face and get to know the, the names to the faces. You know, this is the end of our second year now for Councilmember Fox and Boyle and I, and I think we are finally getting the hang of it and making some progress, so I'm, hopefully we are, we are living up to our expectations, and we're not always gonna make everybody happy, but we, we do try. Other than that, I want to say, be nice, be good, be careful, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyle?
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, this is our last meeting for 2024. I think we've seen a lot of changes here. There's been a lot of good things. There's been some ups and downs. It's been a little haywire, crossface, whatever you want to call it, but we, I think we've, we've accomplished a lot. I'd like to give a lot of thanks to our new mayor and him taking the bull by the horns, if I must say, with a lot of these things, and getting out there and, you know, putting his best foot forward and trying to make stuff happen, and I think it's shown through. We've had a ton of support from our staff, and Bronson's been there right beside him, guiding him along the way. Whether he listens or not, that's up to him. And but, yeah, and most of all, I want to just thank the citizens. I mean, without you guys, I mean, you are who we're here to represent, and we all have the same goal in one way, shape, or form, to continue to make the city as, you know, great as we can, and yeah, we're all trying to do our best, and like what Casey said, we're in our second year here with this. I'm feeling a little more comfortable. But, yeah, we just appreciate the comments. Any support, questions, concerns you have, we're always open to hearing that, so feel free to reach out. Our emails are posted online, business cards are in the back. Yeah, Merry Christmas to everybody, and we'll see you in twenty-four.
Thank you. Councilmember Leha?
Well, I was never so surprised when I walked into the Wheelhouse Community Center and see all these Senator Braun and Senator Ann Rivers and Representative Orkot and Peter Urbano and a representative there for Perez, Senator Perez, or Representative Perez, and so I was just shocked, and I just thought, wow.
You can't leave out Cantwell.
I, and then we had the unveiling of this plan, and I'm just amazed, I'm excited, I'm so excited to be on the council, only six months now, but I am so excited to see all the hard work this council has done, and the attorney, and the mayor has just worked so hard to take action and to move forward with our city, and I'm very, very excited about it, and I really appreciate Brian Cost and Maria, all of the, just, everybody just jumping in and working together. I love it. Last week, last Thursday, I attended Sheriff Horch's Town Hall. He's had four of them this year, and I was able to attend three of them, and I really appreciate that he connects, he's trying to connect every quarter. He tries to connect and let citizens know what's going on in Clark County, and one thing he did say that's not so good is that violent crime has in, just substantially risen in the last two years. And so he, one suggestion he had is that everybody has their porch lights on, and he recommends people to have cameras around their house, or that ringtone, and you know, just to protect ourselves. He, they are planning to hire more. They, they're planning to have fifteen, they've got fifteen more openings, thirteen candidate interviews this week. Hopefully, by the middle of January, that new training center will open, and that'll be a really great boon to the area. He had one of the officers come that they'd use a drone now, and the smaller drones about this big, and the bigger drones like this big, but the big, it looks like a giant spider, and how much that has helped. And how much that has helped in catching people, like if, if somebody's running down the back alley and they send the drone out and they can see where they're going. Or the smaller drones they send into a home, like there was the murder suicide incident that happened in Orchards. And so they sent a, they break a window out and send that drone in and they can see what's going on inside the house. The third thing that they talked about was that just in the last couple of weeks, they have social workers that go out with the officers if it's a medical, I mean, um, mental health crisis. And so we're really excited to see about that for helping people that are in crisis instead of sending them to jail because that doesn't, that doesn't work so well. People need mental health, someone there that knows how to deal with mental health issues. And so it's just a very, very good, um, you know, I could see that Clark County is really trying hard. The other thing, I'm, you know how pro small business I am? I'm always talking about our small businesses in here in town. Silo to get your haircut, Fern and Willow and Fern to get some neat gift items. La Petite for facials and then wellness therapeutics and Podunk's pizza. But I've been noticing on Facebook that there's on the family center, the Center Families, that there's a Carl Ashmore that has been making these wonderful big gift baskets. It's got caramel corn and Christmas decorations and all kinds of neat stuff in it. So I private messaged him and today he brought me this big, huge basket all full of all kinds of neat stuff. And I've got all kinds of auto state company coming tomorrow. So I'm very excited about this. So I want to wish everybody a Merry Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I'm very excited to see what, what we're going to accomplish in our city next year.
Thank you. Council member Servini.
Thank you. I too would like to extend very heartfelt wishes for each of you to have a wonderful gathering with your family and friends with Christmas and New Years. Stay safe and stay healthy. I'd also like to recognize all the hard work that Los Center United has done in the past year. And our officer from Ashugle, who is here with us this evening. Thank you for your coverage and we appreciate your ability to be here when needed. There were some serious things that occurred this year that you were right on top of. And thank you for that. And just very Merry Christmas to each and every one of you. And thank you so much for coming to the meetings and being an active participant in the community and guiding us with your thoughts and ideas and suggestions as well. And extreme thanks to each and every one of the staff. Every department that we have is outstanding. They go above and beyond and they make our community what it is. They have a real commitment to making our parks look beautiful and making sure that every call that comes in is answered professionally. And I'm proud of each and every one of you. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up we have staff reports. And we have a police staff report. As much as you don't see him, he's still behind the scenes pulling the purse strings for the police. Chief Richardson, are you online?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
I can. So tonight Chief Richardson will be presenting the Los Center Police Staff Report. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the public. It's always nice to see Al and Al at all these and I, and Skip. And I miss their shiny faces. So to start with, for the, this is the police report for November of 2023. There is one slight change. This report is usually done about a week out. So we actually had the report in case we had two crimes in November of 2023. We actually only had one. The only crime we had was an extortion where somebody, we believe it was just a scam, was stating that they had pictures of an individual on the internet that they wanted money not to release. The second crime was a case where it was a theft from a business where their payroll checks or somebody was using their checking account. We took her theft report and about three weeks later, the bank called and actually it was a bank error where a legitimate business in Oregon was actually cashing checks and they were just going to the wrong account. So that happens. And other than that, officer activity was about the same it was a year ago. However, community response was a little less. So that's why you see our calls or service are down slightly from, from last year. I would like to comment on the weather. Although it's sunny here where I'm at in Arizona, just remember to look at your tires and your, your windshield wipers. It's time to change them. Make sure it gets dark early. Don't leave your Christmas presents in your car. If you've got small kids, you know, try to park them at a neighbor's house or see if they can hold on to them for you. Because this is the time of year where everybody puts their Christmas presents in their cars and they get stolen. I'd like to comment really briefly on Sheriff Horch and the Sheriff's Department. I can, if you didn't listen to his town hall, they actually got seven additional deputy positions in the county budget. And that's the first new positions and I believe the last fif, in fifteen years. So that, that is good for the Sheriff's Department. And I can tell you that they're doing a lot of community outreach. And two things you might want to look at, they're going to come up next year. They're going to continue to impact crime is obviously the pursuit issue when, when we can actually pursue people. And there's another law that went to effect a couple of years ago that's really impacted us. And that's juvenile detention, where we want to interview a juvenile on a crime. In the state of Washington, if we stop a juvenile, detain them to ask questions about a crime, we have to give them a eight, basically an eight hundred number. They call an attorney. The attorney will evoke, evoke, tell them not to talk to the police. And then we walk away because there's nothing we can do. And even the parents can't override that. So that's all I have for you tonight, Mayor, unless you have any other questions.
I do not. Thank you, chief. Any questions for the chief? Enjoy your vacation. I was going to say enjoy the sunshine. Thanks for rubbing that in, chief.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Next up, we do have an administrative services staff report. Maria Swingerinske will be presenting. Maria.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few highlights from my December staff report. The sales tax disbursement was down to sixty thousand two forty-three compared to sixty-seven thousand one sixty-nine a year ago. The gambling tax was also down slightly over last month. And then staff continues to do regular trainings. Those trainings covered the topics of public investing, new regulations and compliance for social media, first aid and CPR, and unfair labor practices and grievances. And the city has updated our website to include information on our Title VI compliance. Info can be found on the Public Works tab as well as under the Forms tab if somebody is interested in submitting a complaint for Title VI. And then the mayor mentioned it last week, so I'm not going to go through the list, but I did want to put it in writing and highlight everybody who helped for our Christmas festivities because it would not have been as big and grand and as possible without these people. So please give these businesses your, your business, give these companies your business and, and just support them because we want to support local. And then lastly, the city has earned the loss control leader and engage member award from RMSA, which is our insurance carrier through AWC. Here is our plaque. And the city has improved our liability claim experience over the past year. And so just wanted to say kudos to the employees for continuing to be smart and safe in the workplace. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Congratulations.
Thanks.
I think that does it. Thanks, Maria. Good report. We do have an ordinance tonight, actually a couple of them. Next on the docket, ordinance 2023-06, Amending Animal Regulations. Desi Allinger Nelson will be presenting. Desi.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to city council members. A few months ago, I presented a first look on amending 6.10 animal regulation. We made updates based on your recommendations. The changes are adding and clarifying definitions, improve licensing provisions, and adopt regulations relating to keeping livestock within the city. We are adding a definition for senior citizen, service animal, small livestock, and pot-bellied pig. We are updating the term of the dog license to be valid one year from the date of issuance instead of at the end of the calendar year and change the number of dogs per household from three to four. We will be capturing the dog owner's email and not their date of birth. We are adding a new section that addresses livestock and regulates the type and number of animals based on lot size, which you have a chart in front of you. We are removing Class C felony under penalties and replacing it with a gross misdemeanor and adding a new subsection to pertaining to frivolous appeals. You have in front of you a complete list of classification and definitions that are changing. There is a small budget impact, which results in a small increase in revenue for owners licensing four dogs instead of three. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Desi. Does anyone have any questions for Desi at this time before we go to public hearing? No? All right. I do want to remind the public, this will be a public hearing. You, for those coming up for comments, we will keep to the ordinance as it is a public hearing. At 7:31, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Are there any comments from the audience? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Al Philo, 152 West 15th Street. Wow. At least now we're going to, since we've got a code enforcement officer, we can make sure all these regulations, new regulations are followed. Because previously there were farm animals in the city of Los Center without an ordinance. And I'm glad to see that now at least we have an ordinance. So it's okay for people to have farm animals in the city of Los Center. So thank you and God bless America.
Thank you, Al. Any more public hearing comments?
Kimberly Goheen Alvin. Well, I de, I deem discrimination here and will say I consider myself and my animals grandmothered into retaining my animals that I've had for decades and reject that, and I reject most of these regulations brought by this local government. I'm suggesting a town hall or a special meeting with all animal owners here in Los Center. It's obvious that there's a few people here and things, but most people have animals. I believe what scripture says that animals were created first. They were created for mankind and then God created mankind. These animals are ours to help them as they help us. And that's what they are. So I am requesting a town hall or special meeting for all animal owners. Most of my animals are service animals and I cannot follow the RCW taking my constitutional right to care for my family with food or whatever I want for my animals. I consider this a way of taking control over the people. And people will soon find out when they wake up to this nightmare that that's exactly what government is doing. They are taking everything they can. And now think about it, criminal Biden opened up the border, let all this stuff in. And now we're, we defunded our police, we messed up our children for three years. And really it's going to be more like thirty years for those people as they grow up with no teaching and understanding of what really happened. It was inhumane. I'll go back for a few years ago when I said it was inhumane, what has happened here? And all of this is just that, a progressive of taking over a free people and their rights. My animals will stay with me until the day I die or they die first. They're taken care of. And frankly, I'm going to be talking to my neighbors. That's what we're supposed to do. Talk to your neighbors if they have barking dogs. I know I do have neighbors, but I figure, hey, you know, maybe I have a chicken that croaked a little bit or something, I don't know. But we're, we're to get along as people and citizens together, not have a government tell us what to do. And that's my main thrust here is to wake up Clark County to the realization that a government wants to have a one world order and it has to start at grassroots levels. And they want to depopulate. Believe that or not, it's coming. Clark County hasn't had a Board of Health meeting for over four months. The reason is, is because people are putting online and on record the true facts of what's going on with this plandemic. And I just beg people to wake up. But again, I'm grandmothered in and I will keep my animals. God bless America.
Thank you. Any others?
Good evening. I'm John Stockman, I live at 19101 Northeast Lockwood Creek. And I just want to take a moment and say thank you to all of you for your hard work you do for us every day. And especially the effort you guys have put in recently on the police. We were trying to get disappointed to learn that it didn't happen, but at least we have someone else to turn to and looking forward to get it going. And if there's anything I can do to help, let me know. Thank you very much. Have a great holiday season and take care. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to step up to the mic? All right, anybody calling in, please press star six to unmute yourself. State your name and address for the record. Nobody on there. Clerk, are there any public comments to be read?
No.
Hey, thank you, clerk. Time is 7:36. At this time, I'd like to close the public hearing and open it back up from, for council comments. Conversation or questions? Any questions, comments? None. Seeing as how there are none, can I get a motion?
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2023-06, Amending Chapter 6.10 LCMC Animal Regulations.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. This isn't ordinance. Can I please get a roll call, roll call clerk?
Yeah, council member Fox?
Yes.
Council member Casper?
Yes.
Council member Boyle?
Yes.
Council member Leah?
Yes.
Council member Severnay?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, Desi, for your hard work on this. We do appreciate it. And for listening to the council and people when you were doing it. It wasn't just you out there writing this. I just want the public to be aware of that. Thank you. Next up is ordinance 2023-17, Budget Amendment. Maria Swingerinske will be presenting. Maria.
Good evening, council. Tonight we have a budget amendment for you. And as you'll see in the staff report, there are a few reasons that we usually have to do budget amendments. So tonight we are updating the budget for three reasons. The changes this year include the creation of the Roads and Street Fund, which was approved earlier this year by ordinance. And since our budget was adopted before the fund was approved, our 2023 budget did not include this. So we are moving revenues in the amount of $414,000 and expenses from our general fund into this fund in the amount of $408,000. The proposed amendment also includes an additional appropriation of $100,000 for school impact fees. Just a reminder that those are in and out expenses and are all sent back to the school. And then we also had an increase in expenditures of $90,000 for the storm water emergency sinkhole. had an increase in expenditures of $90,000 for the storm water emergency sinkhole repair that happened earlier this year. A stormwater reserves is being used to cover this expense. And this expense was approved by council, but this is just us making the budget amendment for it. And then you'll see on the exhibit in front of you, it's the color sheet of paper, the updated budget. So the recommendation would be to approve ordinance 2023-17 as presented. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions or comments before we open up the public hearing?
No.
Okay, at this time, 7:39, I'd like to open up the public hearing. For ordinance 2023-17, please step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Kimberly Goheen Elbin, life citizen. Clark County, Washington, here for 30 some years where my mother was born. We all know that cities need budgets. What you don't know is how they're doing it. And I'm asking citizens to wake up, starting here in the little town of La Center, Washington, which is going to get bigger. When you understand that millions of illegal immigrants are here, and our budget is going to them, they get a card, they get food, they get a car, travel, they can fly anywhere they want, and your hard earned tax dollars are being used to do just that agenda. It's an agenda. It's not a humane thing that we welcome people here. We will not know who they are. You do not know who they are. And I'm telling you right now, there's poisons that we cannot get rid of in our water. There are PSFA's, I believe. They are recurring. They're getting more and more. And you guys want more and more people here. I don't want to consider the love of money, but it's coming to that. We have too big of a government. We have overloaded every city in America. And right now, when I walk, drive, I can't even breathe well going into Ridgefield anymore. Maybe it's because of the fog, don't know. And why did my mic go off? My minutes up? No. Oh, okay. So I can wait. Well, I just want it on record. Okay. So when you overpopulate a little city, knowing that there's no clean water on the earth, we have over polluted this earth, where are the people going to go? Well, Biden, criminal Biden, said, let's open up our sovereign nation and bring them all in here to weaken America because he wants to take us down, just like the United Nations wants us to be taken down. I can have proof, Portland and Vancouver, y'all know that, right? They are members of this entity taking down America to depopulate and to have a one world control. You don't have to like that or not, but you better doggone discern for yourselves as to what's going on. I don't mind a city, but we're losing our country setting. It's our heritage. We won't know anybody anymore. How, we can't even teach our children what's going on now because we have people that, and I don't care about color. You know, God created us all, so nobody's going to use that on me. But I don't want somebody next door to me who I don't know who they are, what damage they've done to us, and what's going to happen here. And frankly, I'm really tired of all this. We need to wake up. We do not need more population here, at least in La Center or Clark County, where I was born and raised here. It's, we've had 30 some years of growth already. We're over polluted. What the hell are you guys, you need to think about this.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, it's Jesus's birthday we are celebrating.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Alphilla 152 West 15th Street. A budget amendment. We just passed a budget, what, a month ago? And now this is the last meeting of the year, and we're passing a budget amendment. You know, evidently, you know, when I was talking about due diligence, or somebody wasn't paying, we should have got it all squared away the first time. You know, and instead of bringing this up, or at least waited until after the first of the year, you know? Yeah. Anyway, have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. God bless America.
Thank you, Al. And Maria would like to address that comment respectively real quick.
So just for clarification, this is a budget amendment to the 2023 budget, which was passed over a year ago. The budget that we just passed was the 2024 budget, and we must by RCW do this before the end of the year.
Thank you, Maria. Any other public comments? Please step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record. Are there any callers calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourself. State your name and address for the record. Clerk, are there any public comments to be read?
No.
Okay, thank you. At 7:45, I would like to close the public hearing and turn it over to council for comments, questions, conversation. Counsel?
If there are no questions or comments or conversations to be had, can I get a motion, please, counsel?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 2023-17, amending the 2023 budget for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This isn't ordinance. Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Leha?
Yes.
Councilmember Severnay?
Yes.
Motion, our ordinance passes. Thank you, counsel. And thank you, Maria, and your team for putting that together. You can thank Riley as well for us, please. Okay, next up, unfinished business. Counselor, is there any unfinished business that you'd like to discuss? All right. New business, counsel swearing in. Ms. Maria Swinger Inskeep will be doing a swearing in.
Whoa.
Oh, thank you. Do you want my mic?
So you can actually get out here, right?
Oh, yes, I am.
Okay, if you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Myrna Leha.
I, Myrna Leha.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I'm a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will for the best of my, and will to the best of my judgment.
And will to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skills and abilities.
Truly faithfully and diligently.
Truly faithfully and diligently.
And impartially perform.
And impartially perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of council position number four.
Of council position number four.
City of La Center.
City of La Center.
In and for Clark County, Washington.
In and for Clark County, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
Thank you, and congratulations.
And I really want to thank everyone that voted for me. These, two of these people here, Victoria Ferrera is a Battleground City Council, and Gary Wilson is, won his seat for Evergreen School District. And the three of us, plus there's one other that wasn't able to make it tonight, we actually worked together, helped each other, campaigned together across cities, Vancouver, Battleground, and La Center. And we really, really felt that, the three of us felt that it was a blessing from God that we won. So I want to thank you, thank all the citizens here, and thank God.
Okay, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Elizabeth M. Severnay.
I, Elizabeth M. Severnay.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment.
And will to the best of my judgment.
Skill and ability.
Skills and abilities.
Truly faithfully diligently.
Truly faithfully diligently.
And impartially perform.
And impartially perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of council position number five.
Of council position number five.
City of La Center.
City of La Center.
In and for Clark County.
In and for Clark County.
Washington as such duties are prescribed by law.
Washington as such duties are prescribed by law.
Congratulations. Last, but certainly not least, Mayor Strobin?
Again, right?
Yes.
The star of the night. Okay. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Thomas Strobin.
I, Thomas Strobin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
Truly faithfully diligently.
Truthfully, faithfully, diligently.
And impartially perform.
And impartially perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of mayor of La Center.
Of mayor of La Center.
In and for Clark County, Washington.
In and for Clark County, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties prescribed by law.
Congratulations.
We're going to do it again in another 15 minutes. So we've already done the executive session, so that one's out. Before we make a motion for adjournment, I do want to make one last comment to the residents and people attending. The council up here and the people that put together these ordinances and presentations, they aren't just doing it because they want to or that it's just them. You know, they make public outreach, they talk to people. The council does do their due diligence before making decisions. So when you see those come before you, this isn't just a spur of the moment thing that some dictator or something along those lines decided that that was what was needed for the city. Right? With that, I still would like to wish you guys all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Please be safe. Can I get a motion for adjournment? Second. It's been moving in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 There he is. I wasn't moving on without you, Casey. Opposed? Abstained. Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone. Good night.